I want to call this Baker County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. I would ask if you had a cellphone or something that makes noise, if you would please put it on silent for us, please. Also, if you'd like to speak to the board and you're not on the agenda, if you'd fit on a speaker card that's on the table on the back wall, get it to Ms. Sarah, Ms. Cale, they'll get it over to me, and I will let you speak at the appropriate time. And with that, Pastor Joe, you've been invited to give the prayer and the pledge tonight. If you would come through the front, we'd appreciate it.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you, oh God, for your minute blessings. Lord, we thank you for all that you have done for us. We thank you for this day, oh God, as we gather here, Lord, now, to do the business, oh God, of our community, our county. We ask you, oh God, that you would grant us wisdom and grant us, oh God, the things that we need to do, oh God, and give us your favor, your grace, and your mercy. So, Father, I pray, oh God, for these men and women, that, oh God, have been elected, God, to do the business for your people. So, Father, bless us today in the name of Jesus. And we thank you, oh God, for this, our community at Baker County, and, God, for all the things, oh God, that we encounter and do. So, Father, bless us, oh God, that we will be able, Lord, to lead a quiet and peaceable life in the name of Jesus. So, Father, bless us now, oh God, as we take care of our business. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Let us, amen, do the pledge.
Pledge to the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and none of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Joe. When we come in, and Mr. Mann said, Pastor Joe's here, he's my pastor. I said, well, I beg your pardon, Mr. Joe's everybody's pastor in Baker County. Appreciate it, Mr. Mann. And with that, we'll move into our approval of the agenda. I move, we approved the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. If anyone had a chance to look at the consent agenda items and everything that's on there, if we approve that, we'll move forward. I move, we approved the consent agenda items.
Second.
And motion second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into our next item on the agenda, which is elected officials and Ms. Madam Harvey, clerks of course.
The most recent update on the F I twenty-three audit is everything is turned in. We are waiting to hear back from the auditors. We done request up until we left today. So, everybody is up to date on all the requests, the sheriff's office, the clerk's office, and the county. So, we're just waiting to hear back from them for what they need.
And we have actually hired in another CPA to help with this process?
Yes. Do we know how much they've done so far, as far as hours wise?
We don't know how many hours because we was talking with Stephanie and Elder earlier last week, and they were, we were having to try to get them in the system, get them set up, kind of give them a tutorial where to go and what to do. We don't know right now how many hours that they have been, but, you know, we've worked with them probably since, probably middle of last week, on and off. Not constantly, but on and off since the middle of last week.
Okay.
All right. You have any other updates, Commissioner?
So, I did, just while we're on the subject, we had a meeting, was it three twenty-six, which we kind of got everybody involved, all the parties, and we all sat down and just kind of made sure we're all on the same page, just got an update as well. As of that, let me pull up my calendar real quick. Our last meeting was three eighteen.
No, it was two twenty-six, you know, last Wednesday.
Yeah.
Last Wednesday.
My bad. Let me draw my calendar.
I fixed it. You're working in the future, brother.
February eighteenth is when we had our, February eighteenth, we had our last meeting.
And we met the following Wednesday.
We met the following Wednesday, which was the twenty-sixth. So, two twenty-six. I apologize.
No problem.
Two twenty-six, we all got together and made sure we're on the same page. We spoke with the auditor as well. Everything had been submitted the previous week from the sheriff's office. They had submitted their stuff by Friday, which would have been two twenty. It was late Thursday night, so Friday morning, the auditor's got it. I spoke with the auditor on the way here, and he informed me that the sheriff's office, office portion of it had already, they had already begun working on the audit itself. So, all of the information was gathered and complete, so they were working on that part as of right now. When we talked about the clerk and the county, where he was talking about the county, C K H is the accounting firm that we have currently. That's what Madam Clerk is working with to get the books, I don't want to say auditable, but get them tidied up a little bit.
They are actually just delving a little deeper in than what the auditors, to help the auditors out.
To help the auditors match up to the supporting documentation. From what he was saying, they just got through the bank rate portion of that?
Correct.
Is that where we stand today?
Yeah, I think C K H had actually done all that, and they were actually going, I think they'd already gone through the bank rate section of it, so, yeah.
Okay. So, was there any changes that you know of on that?
No, the last, the last update I got from them was this afternoon, and like I said, Kristy was still sending stuff, and we finished a request to send it right before we left to come over here. So, it's not like, I mean, we're doing it all through the day.
Right, right, right.
You know, so it's hard to say what they're going to tell you, because we submit stuff through the portal, through email, basically, whatever. So, we've done everything that they've requested of us.
That's right. And he made sure to let us know that, hey, everything that we, they're jumping right on every single part. But as of right now, the only thing that they had worked through was the bank reconciliations.
I think C K H, but I think that James Moore had been working on other aspects of it.
Right. But as far as what C K H's part is, that's as far as they had got up to this point. I think there was a couple of things they had to do to the bank rates to get, you know, get it over to James Moore.
Correct.
So, right now, that's kind of the portion of the, of where we're at with C K H, correct?
That's my understanding. Like I said, that's kind of the information that you and I both have got.
And that was coming from Ben with James Moore, probably about three thirty. So, that's where we're at right now. He says, so now they can start reconciling that back to the trial balance and, you know, completing the audit to match the supporting documentation at this point. So, from the sheriff's office, they're moving forward with the audit. From the county, they're still working with C K H to get everything tidied up. That's where we're at.
Questions, comments, or commissioners?
I do. And I'm going to start off in prefaces with mine is probably going to be a little much more sharper and pointed. It's not a surprise. I've had the last two weeks to work through some of this and understand where we got, how we got to where we're at today. I've had conversations with Chris Doolin as well to help understand where we're at. I have a question. The last commission meeting, I specifically asked the question, was the twenty-one, the twenty-one, twenty-two audit. The last audit that was submitted on time was the twenty-twenty-one. It was submitted on time. We put in a new system, started September twenty-one. So, the twenty-one, twenty-two was the first year with the new A D G system, and that audit was not submitted on time.
No, sir.
I asked the question, were there any implications because of that was not submitted on time? And your response was, no, there was not. I asked the question, or commented there was, there was a sixty-six thousand dollar impact that we lost in unrecoverable revenue because of that. And your reply, let me ask you this, is that still correct that you were not aware of that implication?
I was not aware. I was told by the finance team that we had thought everything was submitted, and we didn't lose any revenue.
So, your staff did not inform you, and you are not aware that the county lost sixty-six thousand dollars because of lack of performance by your office. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's a concern. To me, that's a concern when the staff is not advising you, and you are not even aware of a loss to this county of sixty-six thousand dollars. That's more than two years of my salary sitting on this board that went out the window because of no, simply because of the failure of your act, or your office. And if you want to own the office, it's yours of doing the job that you're elected to do and ensuring it gets done, and we hire people to do jobs and for it to go that long. Because you have to understand, the public does, you have nine months to complete the records, submit it, have the audit done, and turned in. The last bit of documentation was submitted three days shy of two years. I don't know how by any stretch of the imagination that can be considered acceptable by any stretch of the imagination. Certainly isn't in mine. And to have something submitted two years after it was due, when it was supposed to be nine months, that's, to me, doesn't work at all. I'm going to commend Ms. Brittany Wright in the newspaper for doing the leg, for advising of so much of these deadlines. To go through it and show the twenty, the deadlines and the emails that were sent from the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee that were showing the deadlines for the twenty-one, twenty-two one, because every one of those communications went to you as the clerk, to the finance director, to the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, and to Sarah, the county manager. And at the end of the year, we do a reconciliation budget. And the best way that I can say that now, the way I see that reconciliation budget, is we sweep all of that under the rug and say, here's all balances. For nobody to come to this board and say, we lost sixty-six thousand dollars in revenues, somebody isn't doing their job. Plain and simple. The audit for twenty-one was due on June thirtieth of twenty-three. It was submitted June twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-four. Again, it was three days, three days short. Commissioner Chairman Anderson mentioned last time, your on-the clerk is on this agenda for every time to see if there's any updates. And let me ask you this, have you yet come to this board ever to say audits are late and here's our approach?
No, sir.
Yet we get them. Yet it's late. October for this current audit, for the one that was due June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, three months after the nine-month deadline had passed, the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee sent a notification to Chairman Croft, and they sent it to Sarah, to you and the finance director, that indicated they're concerned taking actions. They've not received it. What's to be done? They need a response. This board again, unless you're aware, and two members weren't on here. Mr. Hartley, you were on here, you were on here, and I can tell you, I never received it. I had no idea that it was late. Sarah, let's come back to you on this one. That notification went out. You responded back, received, will address this ASAP. I'm not sure what ASAP means. I always thought it meant as soon as possible. Nothing was done. Crickets, silence, nothing. Three months later, on January twenty-eighth, we get a follow-up from J LAC, J LAC's Joint Legislative Auditing Committee. Three months after we're going to do something ASAP, and again, the board wasn't even advised of it, J LAC reaches out again and says, haven't heard anything from the county whatsoever. We're having meetings. If something isn't done, we're having meetings to begin discussing sanctions. That was January twenty-eighth. And again, what did we hear? Crickets. And that went to you. It went to the finance director. It went to Sarah, and it went to Chairman Croft. And nothing was said or done to this board. Then, what was it, Friday, February the sixth, February seventh? We found out about it on a Friday afternoon. And who did we find out about it from? Not a first soul here in the county, from our paid lobbyist to tell us, you better do something right now, county. They're meeting on Monday morning to start sanctions against Baker County. So, we kicked in, letters were sent. Ms. Chairman, appreciate you. You sent letters to the clerk. You sent letters to J LAC to start showing we were doing something. So, on Monday, J LAC gave us thirty days. We got to March, into March, to get this in. Understanding it took the county offices seventeen and a half months to submit the information to the auditors. So, when it comes back that the audit isn't done, don't blame the auditors. We talk about it's the busy time of the year, and they got so much, yeah, because they deal with clients that do what they're supposed to do. This is a busy time of year. Northeast Florida Regional Council, three months after theirs, they've already not only had it all done, they've had it audited, and they presented to the board. Where I work, we're government owners, same thing. Four and a half months after the end of the fiscal year, it's all done. Seventeen and a half months, we finally hand it off to the auditors. And so, there's no sense in us blaming the auditors for not getting the job done, because the auditors is not the problem here. We took eighteen months or so to complete, to get the stuff submitted for the twenty-two, twenty-three audit. We have to have the twenty-four audit submitted and done and approved by the auditors and submitted to them, and three months later. I have absolutely no confidence whatsoever that it's going to be done on time. The track record clearly doesn't show it. When it takes two years to do one, and a year, and over a year and a half, almost a year, and nine months to do the second one, it'll take a miracle to pull it out. We're still waiting to see if we're going to get sanctions for this one. We've engaged the services of a consultant. Did you see the hourly rates that they charge? And let's understand what this consultant's doing. They're not doing the audit. They're doing the work to get the information assembled that the county staff should be doing to give it to the auditors, to get it cleared up. And at what cost are we going to, what is it going to cost us? I definitely want to see the final bill when it's all said and done. And I'm not sure, are they working on the twenty-three audit, or are they working on the twenty-four audit?
Twenty-three.
Are we going to pay them to do twenty-four as well?
Y'all said to hire someone to get us over the hump, because we don't have finance staff. So, if they are able to help us, we will engage them to help us.
What are you doing to address your finance staff?
I don't have a finance staff. I have Cheryl, and an accounts payable, and an insurance clerk.
I ask again, what are you doing to address your finance staff?
We've done as much as we can do, sir.
So, you're saying that you have no choice, you can do nothing, and that you can't, in other words, what you're saying, you're saying is you cannot perform your constitutional duties to ensure that the county's audit is done on a timely manner?
We will do what needs to be done. I will have to hire someone, and that's just something, y'all don't want to pay people to do anything. You think his rate's high? Yeah, it's high. But have you tried to hire a CPA? Have you tried to find somebody to come in and do any kind of accounting work? I don't even have a clerk finance person right now. I have nothing. So, I have looked everywhere. But everybody thinks that county staff is going to pay him a hundred thousand dollars. It can't happen. Then you're going to fuss because I'm over budget for something.
You are responsible for putting together a budget on an annual basis to perform your job and your responsibilities and bring it to this board. And so far, your budget that you've presented and been approved, because it reminds us often that it's approved by the state before it comes to us, it's been approved by the state that you can do your job, it comes to this board, and we approve it. You've never come back and said, I got to have more, I need more staff. So, don't start today saying that this is something that's a surprise. You knew it when your budget was late for the, the audit was late for twenty-one, twenty-two. You didn't change your budget? So, I ask again, are you going to do something different to address the county financing in order to ensure we don't have late audits every year and get sanctioned on an annual basis?
We'll do what we have to do to make sure that these audits are not late, whether it means to hire an outside person, a contracted person, whatever it takes, we'll do what it takes to get it done.
Well, that's good, because sixty-six thousand's enough of a loss already. And not only that, let's understand something. Once they introduce sanctions, all of our grant monies stop coming into this county. Now, after it's all submitted, we'll likely get those monies to come back to us, but there is a portion that is non-recoverable. That means when they are withheld, we will not get them back. But I can tell you, this county is not in a predicament, or in a position to be able to hold and pay out bills that we have to pay and not have revenues coming in. I would think you would know this.
I do know this.
But yet we are where we're at. I am very interested in seeing what it's going to cost for us to pay the audit firm to come and do this, because if we can afford to pay them to do it, we should have been addressing it earlier and having staff here to do it. But we could seem to be able to react and solve it, but we can't do it ahead of time. There's been other allegations as well in regards to this entire system. And that's about you can't have access, you don't have access to it. I'm going to tell you something. I have no confidence in your ability to manage access to our county networks. None. We've had an experience in the past where access was into our accounts that we didn't catch. Now, to open it up to say, let's have anybody access our networks, I'm really concerned with it, because it opens this county up for cybersecurity issues that's far greater than you can ever deal with. And to ask us to let contractors connect into our network, and by the way, we have now, we have contractors that are connecting into our, our, our network here at the county, that quite frankly, I'm very uncomfortable having. It's been approved only because of the situation that we are currently in. But I can tell you, as soon as we get past this hump, that access from my standpoint is going to go away. Where I work, and why our audit's doing on time every time, by around the first month, about January, they bring a team of auditors to our office. They sit in our office. They do all their work. They make all the corrections. They do everything inside our office. They don't do it remotely, and our audit's done on time. I, as the chief operating officer from our organization, I do not have access to connect into our network from an outside source. So, when you ask us to let contractors come in and say, the reason you can't perform your job is because our I T staff will not let your outside contractors have twenty-four-seven access, they're not going to. It's not smart for this county, and we're not going to expose ourselves to that level of liability. There's going to be some oversight control. We purchased software three and a half years ago. How long are we going to use that as the reason we can't perform? By the way, their office is the one that just absolutely adamantly insisted that we had to have it. It's the best way. The old software couldn't keep up. It wasn't going to be able to perform the services that we needed. And three and a half years later, we're still saying we can't do it because of software conversions. The response is back, again, the response is back to J LAC, that the reason we can't do this job, that this job can't be done, is because we're a small county and we can't hire people. I promise you, their county is a lot smaller than us. That still makes sure it gets done. There definitely needs to be a refocus on what's being done, because this doesn't work. What's happening now doesn't work. Sarah, I'm going to come back to the point of your responsibilities to keep this board informed.
Yes, sir.
Massive failure on your part for not keeping this board informed. It's not just the clerk and the finance directors. That's their chief job, is serving as the controller and managing this, this. But when you get information that's important to this board, that's of this magnitude, I can, I cannot understand how you failed to share that with the board or bring it up at this board, put it in your weekly, something, but for it to go silent, even after you got the notification, said you was going to follow up on it ASAP, nothing happened for three months until they reach out again. Even when they reach out a second time, nothing happens until the Friday before they're going to do sanctions on Monday. That's when we have to get it from our outside entity. That is completely unacceptable to me. I don't know how in the world you can explain that that is acceptable for keeping this board informed. The chairman, when they get a notification, it's not appropriate for them to email the rest of us. That's your job, and you did not do it. I would like to see from the clerk, the plan of getting the twenty-two, the twenty-three, twenty-four audit done as well. We're focused on this one, and we need to stay focused on this one, but I want to also know where we're at with twenty-three, twenty-four.
The guard has requested all the documents for twenty-three, twenty-four. Waiting to get them from the auditor.
Okay. Again, I'd like to see, I'd like to have a written schedule when things are going to be done, to know what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, because my expectation from this point on, until the audit is submitted, I'd like to see weekly up, or the meetings that these, updates at these board meetings on where we're at and what is outstanding. Make a whole list of what's going to be submitted and keep it updated. Here's when it's done. I have zero confidence right now in your office. I have zero confidence in the financing of this. I think there's a point that we need to start talking about having our finance person report back to this, to this board to give us direction and knowing what's happening, because the current one is not working. Not when we are losing money, not when we're getting sanctioned by the state government. We look like a, this county looks ridiculous to go push and beg for appropriations, ask our our senators, ask our representatives to go get money. And then they do it and then they got to stand before J-LAC and answer while we can't even keep our finances straight and do the reporting that's required. That's an embarrassment to them and shame on us for putting them in that position. They've been, they've done a tremendous job with getting us funding to be able to build two fire stations. The council on Asian, the senior enrichment facility, what, I mean, they've been very good and they, we've put them in a very bad position to represent us and it's not right. I expect them, I expect to understand what is taking place, but this idea that we can't get a finance people, we can't hire them, with all due respect, madam, that is your job to solve that. It's not this board's. And with all due respect, if you can't do that, I'm quite sure the governor will take your resignation. And quite frankly, there's some other resignations here that could be taken as well. But I can tell you this, from my standpoint, the action, the way we're at today, with the performance so far, it's not acceptable. It's not acceptable. The citizens of this county deserve better than what we've got right now with the way we're handling finances.
Any other comments, boards?
I just want to echo what Commissioner Bennett has said about cybersecurity and having our files accessed in foreign countries, that we don't have control over any of that. We are in a spot now where we have to take any action we can to get our audits completed and our reports done, but I'm very uncomfortable with international access. We don't have the traceability, we don't have, it's a huge liability potentially for the county and I'm very concerned about having foreign access to our databases.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
J-LAC is supposed to meet on the 31st of March.
Okay.
Yep, and Chris Doolin and I both spoke and he recommended that one of us definitely be there in front of J-LAC. And so I'm, I'm more than willing to, to go to Tallahassee and stand on behalf of Baker County and tell them where we're at and what we're doing to try to move forward and make sure this never happens anymore.
Yeah, I have a meeting set up with them too before then, so.
Yes.
If I'm going to be in the country at that meeting, but that's one of the reasons I brought you on.
Yes, sir.
For you to help us with the situation, because I knew you would be here. But I will be here and I will have a meeting prior to your meeting.
Okay.
And I am getting basically daily updates per email.
Right.
On the situation from, from Sarah and from the auditors.
Yes, sir.
And as a chairman, when I got the information, first thing I done was shared it with the I believe that at any time, any type of information like this comes to this county, it should have been shared with the board and I talked with Ms. Sarah about that already. We shouldn't be in this circumstance, because if this board hadn't known about this a year ago, six months ago, we wouldn't be sitting here today having this conversation. We would have made sure, whatever it took to get this audit out, we would have got it out. It is disheartening to me to see we're in this, in this situation, but we're going to do what we can as a board, as staff, to meet the requirements that the state of Florida has put before, not just this county, but any, every county in the state of Florida. It's not that they're treating us any different than they do anybody else. It's just now it's time for this board to step up and do what we have to do to get this audit done. I agree with commissioners, I don't like putting our information out there just for, and it ain't just everybody. I don't think we're just sending our information out there approved to get the information. It's just not the right way this should have been handled from the beginning. And I can see, sense the frustrations from every commissioner here on why we're in this, in this situation. And as soon as this commissioner, this chairman found out, y'all knew about it. It wasn't, a day later or a day short, it was the same day. And I think that's the way it should have began from the beginning. Not to go down on any commissioner, but this affects our county, not just one individual board member or one individual staff. This is the people's money. And it's very important to me that we, we have money to work with. We have a lot going on in this county. I mean, the roads, EM, 911, everything is affected by this. And I spent a lot of time in Tallahassee begging for money. Little did I know last year when I was, we were begging for money, that we was even in this situation. So I felt about this high when I found out. I'm representing Baker County to the fullest and the highest regard that we're on top of things, we got things moving, we're Johnny on the spot. Little did I know that we was even in this situation as one of the board members of Baker County. So I hope we move forward. I've got staff working on it and I got a commissioner helping me out with the situation. And I just hope that we can move forward and we can, before the 31st, we have an audit presented to the state of Florida.
Yes, sir.
Have we, have we spoken to Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
You spoke to Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Okay, we've kept her informed, we're giving her weekly updates?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Through the board, do we know if we're going to be on time when you talk to the auditors? Have they given us any kind of?
They've, they've just given a promise that they're working on it.
That's what they gave me. Promise that they're working diligently to get it done.
But we still don't know if we're going to meet that deadline.
No. Uh, it's, it's, it'll be a miracle. We, we need to, there's a lot of stuff that needs to happen.
Miracle. But they haven't said that we wouldn't, but they said they're working on this diligence. And I'm going to request after this meeting, a letter sent to J-LAC from our staff and from the county clerk on all the progress that the county is doing and I want that to be a weekly letter sent to J-LAC. And when, when you send it to them, I want it sent to each one of these board members.
Yes, sir.
Whatever, whatever we're sending to them, needs to go to every board member on the updates and where we're at. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move into our next item on the agenda, which is public comment. And then on this one, I'm going to have an update from FEMA. Dennis, if you want to come forward, yours on. They said they was going to give us a, a weekly update, but then I didn't know, it kind of, kind of based up on the agenda. I didn't catch it, so I'm giving them time now to do the update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to give you an update. I have some good news and some, and some news. And so what I'd like to do is kind of start off with just an update on the projects and where we are. And first and foremost, a deliverable that the board presented us with at the last commission meeting. We have both Thomas Howell and Ferguson now on board and along with Lieutenant Ford Professionals and Mr. Clint. And so if you have any questions of them as we're kind of moving forward, but the board asked me the last time, when are we going to have those scopes of work moving forward? We're moving forward. As far as the specific timeframe on the individual scopes of work for each project, I'm going to punt to the, to the professionals. I'm not, I'm not that, that well educated or that well certified, but I do have a commitment that forthwith, we will be starting on the scopes of work for our projects. Can I say immediately? Yes, please, come up and give me a hand.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Stevens, Thomas Howell Ferguson.
Yes.
Thanks for letting us be here. I'm here with John Beal and Chris Smith from our internal Thomas Howell Ferguson team and also with North Florida Professional Services. I think, well, there's a contract right now that Baker County has with North Florida Professional Services. That contract allows task orders, but those task orders under the contract have to be approved by the board. So I would yield to the board, Ms. Little, Mr. Commando, on whatever your decision is based on their recommendations, but to expedite the process, if we need to wait every several weeks for a meeting to occur, to have a task order for the scopes of work to be put together and compiled, that may, that will, not may, that will slow things down. So just to keep you informed of that, I understand that, but it's something that you can consider as a board, whether or not you want to expedite the process, and let's jump right into it. So I, I think that when we look at things, we know what the, what the budgets are and we can, you know, keep you up to date on the process, the projects and where each project stands, where the scope of work is and how far along the team is. But other than that, I would yield to the board and your decision and your direction on how to push forward. I don't want to put you in a bad position, nor do I want to go against any purchasing ordinances or any of your policies and procedures. This, these are, again, sensitive dollars. Anytime you have FEMA money coming through, not only do we have to pay attention to their rules and regulations, which we call the Papa G, but that's the program guide, program and policy guide that they have, but we also have to follow 2 CFR 200, which is the federal code of federal regulations. So we need to be aware of that, pay attention to that, not put you in a bad spot and make sure we don't put you in a bad spot. Thomas, any other?
Yes, sir.
How, how's the funding for North Florida Professional Services? Where's the funding coming up for those services? Is it being reimbursed by the grant or by FEMA?
Yes, sir. Not 100%. I think the projects right now for Baker County are at the 75 plus 12 and a half.
12 and a half percent statement. So it's 12 and a half percent, kind of we talked about it, this would also be applicable with the waiver, should the waiver come through from the government.
But if not, it's 12 and a half percent is what it's going to cost us?
Yes, sir.
Um, we can draft, there can be a scope of work drafted that provides the ability to do multiple different scopes. That work and, and that's one task or quarter that we open, that we execute, that then allows as each one is about to be done, you put together the scope for that one and that's, that's reviewed and, and whoever, Dennis, if you're going to serve as our, our manager of this contract, you've got to get past Dennis to make sure he's good with that scope for that individual one to keep going. But you have one larger general scope for, for, that, that covers a certain dollar threshold and he works through each one of those. It'd be his responsibility, whenever we see we're getting close to that, we meet every two weeks, so it's not like a huge amount of time.
Yes, sir.
If we see that there's additional resources needed before the next meeting, you've got to put it on the agenda to come back to add some additional one. But what I'd want to see from that is how much we're expending for each one of these different scopes. And they will be different because they all got different types of work and different efforts required for them. But my suggestion would be to put forth a scope that covers, you know, an estimated scope, that covers multiple projects, to get that approved, but then individually, before you go, you've got to make sure Dennis has reviewed and he's good with it. That's going to be my suggestion. So I believe that's going to meet every procurement guideline that we have.
Yeah.
It provides the services for this, it delays, it prevents any delays for doing so. And that'd be my suggestion.
Yes, sir. So it's smarter than me that meets your task order requirements that we talked about earlier?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. So I'm happy to be moving forward and happy to report to the board that we are moving forward. So to give you an update really quickly, we had to withdraw one project, so the 125 and Kirkland Branch Box Culvert. We found out recently that is part of the Federal Highway Administration's jurisdiction and not eligible for FEMA reimbursement. So what we've done, met with Ms. Lola from DOT this week and we've begun that process to shift it from a FEMA reimbursement slash project to a DOT FHWA project. I don't have a lot of experience there and not a lot of knowledge, so we're leaning on some of our FDM, Florida Department of Emergency Management folks, who are also working with their counterparts at Florida DOT and Federal DOT to help us in that process, process with the project to hopefully expedite it, because we're really way ahead of the game on that particular project. It had already been submitted to FEMA before we realized that it wasn't eligible. So we did have to remove that project. The second project on...
Can I clarify on that? I want to make sure we understand something. That is a county road and it's county maintained, county operated, whatever. The difference here, and I didn't realize this until Dennis and I had this conversation, that because it is a alternate route for the Federal Highway Administration, i.e. through USDOT, Federal Highway Administration, it's an alternate route, believe it or not, for Interstate 10. If I 10 was closed down, because you can go to Taylor and go up and hit 250 Gums Swamp Road and go around that way. That's the only reason it is, because I asked the same question, this doesn't make logical sense, why? That's the logic behind it. So that's why that project had come off, because you can't get reimbursement through it through FEMA, you have to go through FDOT, through Federal Highway Administration for that one. So that, that's why, it is eligible, it's just through a totally different side of the house to do it.
Yes, sir. Thank you for clarifying. So the next project, Shoals Park, we are basically just waiting on a little bit more input. In fact, I've forwarded some information to MoSara, been working very closely this week with Chris and Jason from the road department. That project is moving forward, the, the Riverkeeper and those folks are getting on board. For our project number 796550 is all I got listed as. Again, not only are we waiting on the scope of work, but we're also there pending a mitigation review. So that is going to be the boat ramp and that one kind of got, it got hung up in a FEMA circle. We finally got that thing straightened out on, on Thursday, yes, this past Thursday. And so we did finally move it forward. FEMA's basically going to add some potential mitigation options to that, but we also then got notified that they're probably going to move it off of what's called a mitigation and onto an alternate project. A lot of legalese FEMA language to say, projects are moving forward, we've still got a few more steps to go through on that process, on that project. Additionally, we're waiting, we have two projects that we're waiting for RFIs on. And so the, we talked with the board, I think, two meetings ago about a little bit of communication and confusion between the multiple agencies in the county and who, which departments were, had reimbursable expenses. And so we met again with Chris this morning, we got some of those done. I think he's working out with Cheryl to try to get some answers to those questions, but essentially, we're attempting to move forward. That deadline is very fast approaching. In fact, on two of the RFIs, we have the, we have the fifth is when our first RFIs are due and then as early as the fifth and then as late as the 14th. I would just say that we're working diligently to try to meet those deadlines and get FEMA's questions answered as quickly as possible so that it doesn't delay. That's for Hurricane Helene specifically on the, the county confusion side. On the other projects, we're hoping to get those moving quickly by answering the questions in a timely fashion. And to come back again, most of the questions are based off of documentation. I know that Commissioner Bennett, you've been mentioning that a lot. It's the documentation side of things and a, and a super high level. Just to, and being honest, we were confronted with the fact that in 2017, the county actually had done some of this. And basically FEMA said, "Look, you told us that you're brand new at it and you're just starting it and you don't really know what you're doing." And then they said, "Here's 2017 where you did it the right way." And so we're having to kind of go back and reconcile that and make sure that the documentation we're submitting now is at that same level.
Do we have copies of the documentation that was submitted in 2017?
Yes, sir.
Have we shared that back with the road department so we know what we got to get together?
And we did share it with them, yes, sir. It was before Chris was here.
I understand.
So we made Chris aware of it, was it last week, I think? As soon as we were, by February, we let Chris know. And so Chris has been really good about stepping up and trying, in fact, he's put a ton of hours in, going back and getting GPS locations for culverts and that kind of thing. So a lot, a lot of work going on in the background for the county departments, so we're hoping we were able to complete it by the deadline.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So one really positive thing that I'm, I'm happy to say, project number 801416, that would be our CAT B, category V, emergency preparedness measures. That has been obligated. So what that means is FEMA says, "Yep, you're eligible for the money and now we're just waiting for the check to come." Essentially, the, the project was worth $67,000 minus the county match. So we're, what we're looking at is 50, $50,800 plus $8,400 coming from the state, 12 and a half percent. So that's the dollar figure we can expect to see in our coffers fairly shortly.
And what was that project for? What was that one for?
The project was basically, remember, I talked last week about the things you do immediately after the storms. immediately after the storm, so cut and toss-
Cut and toss and all of those kinds of things.
Lots of Sheriff's Office stuff, some roadwork stuff, and lots of Fire Department stuff. So, it's those things you're doing immediately after the storm, not so much damages as it is a response to what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
On another note, so I would share some individual numbers with you about the FEMA, and they've gone up slightly. So, from the, for our citizen's standpoint, the individual assistance numbers went up a little bit, somewhere in the neighborhood of $26,000 for Helene since the last time we talked. But I want to really draw your attention on this single page to something, and we kind of got blindsided, to be honest with you. We got blindsided last week at a co-ed meeting, and notice where it says, "Total Members of Baker County Residents on TSA." I won't, we didn't come to the board quicker with this, because we got conflicting numbers, and we didn't have accurate information to bring to this board. So, as soon as we could get as accurate as information as we could, which was yesterday at about 10 o'clock, that, the second handoff that you have, I'm just going to cover that from a 30,000-foot view, but it's really important, because what it identifies is we have 38 of our residents that can't return home from Hurricane Helene. Now, some of those are renters, some of those are owners. The vast majority of those folks are staying in hotels in our county, so we have a total of 13 families that are staying, that are Baker County residents, staying in hotels in our county. We have an additional five households that are Baker County residents, staying in hotels somewhere else, as far away as Georgia. We also have an additional six families that aren't from Baker County, that are staying in our county at our hotels. And so, I bring this to the board's attention specifically to highlight the fact that the disaster, we're not done yet, we've got a lot of work to do. And we got blindsided by it. We don't have a Human Services Department in the county that, an overarching agency that kind of keeps track of this stuff, and unfortunately, we stumbled into the information, to be honest with you. And so, I can tell you that we've met with the United Way this morning, hopefully getting them to get on board to give us a hand. We're working with the United Methodist Church as well, to try to get some funding, to try to figure out how we can help these residents that don't have homes to go back to, or were renters that can't afford to replace what they lost. I wish I could give you a lot more information on those families that are in dire need. Unfortunately, we just don't have the information available yet. We entered into something called an information sharing agreement with FEMA. Last week, we submitted the application, and then we had to re-submit the application this morning. Essentially, what that's going to do is give us access to that information, where were the homes, where did they come from, how many folks in the family, in each family, what specifically are their needs? That information is all coming, it's just a little bit slow right now, and as soon as we have more information to report to the board, we will. But I would like to assure you that the Emergency Management Department, Director Blanchard, and the Sheriff, we are doing everything in our power, even before we have that information, to get the necessary resources from outside this community to come in and assist those. At some point, it's going to require some of the folks in this county to help step up, I think, to assist that, you know, that large number of folks, but I wanted the board to be aware that that was a shoe that dropped last week that we were unaware of. I'll be happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Only thing I got, I'm still getting phone calls about the boat ramp. Are we able to do anything yet?
So, we've, and we've got Thomas Allen Ferguson here to help out, so if I can just bluntly explain the process, that scope of work, that scope of work can be tailored in such a way that there may be some things that we can do, but it's got to be incorporated in the scope of work as a process, not going in and fixing something and come back and do it later, and don't-
That's true. No, that was absolutely on target. We have to make sure that we have the engineers look at it, put together a scope of work, and then push forward with the project worksheet, with the PW.
Okay. As long as we get that worked out, I mean, I don't want this to be shut down the entire time we're trying to relocate it or anything like that.
Yes.
If we have public access to it, I would recommend we try to do that.
It's, so, the discussions we've had, not just with Thomas Allen Ferguson, but also as well with Lake City Professional, or-
North Florida.
North Florida Professional Service, I apologize.
NFPS.
NFPS, is, number one, the contractors are actually working for Baker County now, which is a little bit different than when they were here for the state, and we've tasked both of those companies to make sure they're working for the county. So, once they understand what the county's needs are, and the desire of this board, as well as our citizens evidently, and then figure out the way we put it in so it doesn't jeopardize that funding, and that, we've given them that as a mantra for, under which to work. So, that's our goal, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody else have anything?
Nothing else. I have a public hearing at 6:00, and recess till 6:00 P.M.
Board meeting back, and we're going to go into our public hearing. We have two items to discuss, and they're both on the final hearing tonight.
Yes, sir.
All up to you.
If it's okay with you, we have two companion applications, so we will present them together, if that's all right.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the applications we have tonight are for ordinance number 2025-01, a small-scale land use amendment. The request is from Agricultural B to Very Low Density Residential. And the companion application is for ordinance number 2025-02, a rezoning, with the request of Agricultural 7.5 to Residential, Conventional, and Mobile Home 1. So this parcel is located off of Reed Stafford Road, just across the street from the intersection of Fred Perry Road. It is owned by Mr. Vernon Purvatt and some of his children and grandchildren. So, as I noted two weeks ago, you will see in my staff report that the applications were made by Ms. Darla Durans, that is Mr. Purvatt's daughter, and she is listed on the property with him, but his name is listed first in all of, you know, all of the records, all the public records. So, that is why we listed his name first on all of the applications. It is currently 1.37 acres with a land use of Ag B, zoning of Ag 7.5. So this is the homestead property of Mr. Purvatt. And years, years, years ago, he had given some family lots to children and grandchildren. Recently, he had gifted some property to a grandchild. Unfortunately, did not go through the proper channels, did not go through the family lot process to do that. And it resulted in him having a non-conforming lot for his homestead property. He went to do some remodeling, and when they got to the financing stage, he realized that he had unintentionally created this non-conforming lot. So he would like to remedy, remedy this situation. So that's why we're here. You'll see most everything around the property matches the land use and zoning that it currently has, with that Agriculture B and Ag 7.5. You will see just down the street, there is some Very Low Density Residential and some RCMH 2.5, as well as a little pocket of Ag 5. So you'll see there in the picture, that is Mr. Purvatt's home there in the background. This area, it does have a wide variety of shapes and sizes, most of which have been created by way of family law or by inheritance. So, that's why you see the, the wide range that you do. Again, the intent here is to bring the parcel into compliance. Staff recommends approval, and LPA recommended approval as well. And Ms. Durans is here, if you have any questions for her.
Anyone in the public have any comments or questions on ordinance 2025-01? Questions or comments? 2025-02, rezoning. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments on either item presented to the board?
Make the motion to approve ordinance 2025-01, three by title.
Second. Motion, the second. Mr. Commander?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 2025-1. An ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Baker County, Florida, making a small-scale amendment to the Baker County Comprehensive Plan by reclassifying approximately 1.37 acres of real property owned by Vernon Purvatt from Agricultural B to Very Low Density Residential, providing findings by the Board of County Commissioners, providing direction for recording, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Back into our public hearing. Any questions or comments on ordinance 2025-02?
Make the motion to approve ordinance 2025-02, three by title.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Mr. Commander?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 2025-2. An ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Baker County, Florida, amending Baker County zoning map by reclassifying approximately 1.3 acres of real property owned by Vernon Purvatt from Agricultural 7.5 to Residential, Conventional, and Mobile Home 1, providing for a change of zoning, providing direction for recording, providing for separability, and providing effective date.
Close our public hearing. Back into regular meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Does it for our public hearing.
All right, that's all right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Then we'll go back into our regular scheduled meeting. And we're in the, under the public's comments section. And I have a comment card from Mr. Marcus Reeves. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, for the record, my name is Marcus Reeves, R-E-E-V-E-S. I'm representing Meridian Healthcare. We're out of 1565 Southwest Wilson Road, Gainesville, Florida, 32608. I'm the community liaison, representing our disaster recovery team. It's a new FEMA grant-funded program that looks to help people who may have been impacted by Hurricane Helene. We offer our in-house services, which include mental health first aid and helping people cope with the trauma that survival brings. We also seek to link people towards local resources that we may not offer in-house. So that could be something like employment assistance, or legal services, or childcare. So, obviously, the public speaker before me, there's still people really feeling the after effects of this storm. And Meridian Healthcare is here to kind of help those people get their lives back on track. Roger, do you want to add anything?
Roger Langford, the new project manager for this FEMA grant. There were seven counties, working towards again, trying, finding the problems that Dennis just addressed. It's the tip of the iceberg. I was at Cedar King yesterday. It's just phenomenal between here and there, what that hurricane did. So, we are building a team. We're hiring about 20 people right now. There'll be crisis counselors, there'll be team leaders, liaisons, good people like Marcus. And our goal is to see what we can do to make a difference. And so, we've got multiple resources, a long list. And so, our goal is to come in with those families that are displaced and help them find help. So, we're here, we're used, and we'll be actively in the community, as well as the other counties around us.
Roger, y'all working with the EOC, kind of find out the people he was talking about this.
We are tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is about, this is exactly what you're talking about.
Exactly.
These people need help.
Yep.
And this is where y'all could step in and provide that. And along with that, it could inform the county on what we need to do to try to help. We need to get these people back in their homes, or rental, whatever we need to do to get their families whole again. And y'all would be a great asset.
We'll be interested tomorrow morning.
Appreciate that.
So, yeah.
I've got flyers, just detailing services we offer. It's a new grant. So I don't have big fancy business cards, but I've got my name and contact info on this one.
If you'll get that, Ms. Sarah, if she can get maybe posted on our webpage.
Yes, sir, certainly.
That y'all, y'all are accessible through this, and it'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speakers' cards, but if anyone else would like to speak, if you fill out a card, get it up here to Ms. Sarah, she'll get it to me, and I'll let you speak at the appropriate time. We're going to move into our next item of business, which is new business, Tobacco-Free Partnership SWAT. I seen SWAT team coming in earlier, I was fixing to run, but I figured it wasn't for me. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Thank you. This is Joy Owens, Tobacco-Free Baker. I'm the Tobacco Policy Manager here. And I just want to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity for our youth clubs to come and speak tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners and Community Members. My name is Cheyenne Dowey, and next to me is Wyatt Forbes. We are members of the SWAT, Students Working Against Tobacco Community Club, representing our community partnership with Tobacco-Free Baker, supported by the Baru of Tobacco-Free Florida. Our mission... Sorry, I don't know how this works.
Cheyenne, is it turned on on this side? Check if it's on. It may not be on yet.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, sorry about that. Our mission is to mobilize community partners to establish long-lasting systems and policy changes that promote tobacco-free social norms, to prevent usage of tobacco products by youth, young adults, encourage and support tobacco secession, eliminate health hazards of secondhand smoke, and decrease the number of deaths due to tobacco and nicotine products. The purpose of today's presentation is to propose moving from a county resolution to a county ordinance on tobacco and vape-free public parks to create a cleaner and healthier environment for all visitors. Last year, we attended a county commissioners' meeting to introduce the partnership and sure initiatives we would like to accomplish. Since then, our SWAT club has organized a successful park cleanup. We worked together to pick up litter, and we were shocked by how much tobacco and vape waste we found. Seeing all the cigarette butts and vape products showed us why tobacco-free parks ordinance with enforcement is needed. It's not just about health. It's also about keeping our parks clean and safe for everyone. We plan to do even more park cleanups to show our community supports this change. In 2024, the Florida Youth Tobacco Survey revealed concerning statistics for Baker County students. Secondhand smoke exposures, approximately 64.7% of students reported being in the same room or car with someone smoking cigarettes or using electronic vapor products in the past 30 days, aligning with the state average range of 60.4% to 69%. About 57.7% of student electronic vapor product users reported using products containing nicotine, within the state average range of around 49.9% to 65.5%. These findings highlight a significant exposure to tobacco and vape products among our youth. Implementing and enforcing a tobacco-free public parks ordinance could reduce such exposure, promoting a healthier environment for both youth and community members.
Moving on, I'd like to talk about enforcement. Implementing a civil citation system to enforce a tobacco and vapor-free public parks ordinance offers several key benefits. One, enhance compliance and deterrence. The presence of enforceable penalties serves as the deterrent, encouraging individuals to adhere to the ordinance. This proactive approach leads to higher complant, or compliance rates, ensuring that public parks remain healthy, remain healthy environments for all visitors. Two, promotion of public health by reducing tobacco use in public parks. The community is less exposed to secondhand smoke, which has no safe level of exposure and poses significant health risk. Enforcing the ordinance protects this, or protects the well-being of the park, visitors, especially children and individuals with respiratory conditions. And finally, three, environmental preservations. Tobacco products, partially cigarette butts, are a major source of litter and environmental degradation. Enforcing the ordinance helps maintain the cleanliness and aesthetic appeal of the parks, reducing pollution and potential harm to wildlife. Our proposal here to you today is we would like for all the money collected on the following citation to be put back into our county parks, to help with the maintenance and improve county parks. And finally, we want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about the tobacco and vape-free ordinance for the county, or for the county public parks. We want to ask for your consideration today to move forward with the following ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Do we have an ordinance prepared before us, or is that a recommendation? Am I missing it?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Last year, when the group came before us, their recommendation was is that we adopt the same ordinance that the City of McLinney has already adopted, so that there was some uniformity across the county. At the time, Rich and I did review that ordinance, so it wouldn't take much to get it into a Baker County draft form. But it is not included with, with this language, but they are asking that the same ordinance be approved by you all.
Okay. Is there any concerns about doing that? Is there any reason why we would not want to do that?
Have the same ordinance or an ordinance in general.
An ordinance in general.
No, sir, I don't believe there were really any concerns. Last year was just some questions about enforcement. And I think that the SWAT group has talked with the Sheriff's Office. I think they've got some plans. Joy can probably elaborate on that about talking with the county judge about it as well.
That was going to be my question, is enforcement.
So, and that was the thing is, you know, we can ask for it all day. And like we talk about, speaking ticket, you know, if, if there's no enforcement to it, it's harder to, you know, have compliance. So, with this one, and we're going to probably have to do an amendment in the city, because at the time, we didn't have an enforcement piece. So we've been working with the Sheriff's Office and to get a civil citation. And they said it was pretty easy, because we, we've already created it, we've worked with them, and then they can put it in the database, because Wyatt, they have a, you have a system inherent. They're also an explorer, so they have it in a database system that's easy for the officers to pull up.
Their CAD system, I believe they're going to be able to implement something in their system that they're able to pull up and add on to the report. So if they're able to go there and they get caught or something with X, Y, and Z, then they're able to pull up and see everything that they've been charged with from previous events.
My suggestion, sir, is let's get a copy of the city's ordinance. Let's get it rid, if you're good with it. Let's put something back on the agenda to bring it back for us to be able to pass that. Because I think, I think, let me just say, growing up, we were around people in the cars riding with them smoking, right?
Yes.
That was how it happened back then. Today, quite frankly, whenever we went to no smoking in public places and restaurants and things, seems like today, man, I can sniff out a cigarette in a heartbeat so far away. And I don't like it. I don't like having to walk into the building when you've got somebody sitting outside smoking. And it's, we've become super sensitive to it. So, to me, this is, especially in our public parks, public parks where people go to take their kids and things, it's better for them not to be there. So I'd certainly support doing that. We just need to make sure we get the right ordinance together, because first of all, the Sheriff's Office can't enforce anything. We don't have anything to give it to them. Now, it really comes back to the sheriff to enforce it once it's there, but we've got to give them the tools to be able to enforce it. So I'd, personally, I'm good with it. Rich?
So I'm not, I mean, I'm opposed to smoking in public places. I don't want this to come across the wrong way. But, because I do travel in other counties, I'll tell you that the conversations that come up are, one, what you just described, the enforcement issue, and there's costs related to that. The second was, one that I hadn't anticipated, there was a group of citizens that came out who were upset about the fact that it said all tobacco products. And because they dipped, they thought it was not anything that was harmful to others on a secondary basis if they were in a park and they were dipping. So, just before you start getting phone calls, those were the two things that came up in my travels.
Well, I'm not going to be in support of any ordinance without any type of enforcement. I think it's just a blank piece of paper. And we ran into that with our Park, Shoals Park issues. And I'm not going to put this board back in that position again. So, if there's not a letter of enforcement and some type of enforcement behind the ordinance, it's not worth our time to do an ordinance if there's no enforcement attached to it.
Right.
And I think that should be ran through the Sheriff's Office, too, to make sure that he's on board with whatever type of enforcement is applicable for this, this situation.
Would such an ordinance apply to all public areas?
I think there were, that's specific for county parks, is the way that it's written.
So Shoals Park?
Yes, sir.
Boy Scout Camp?
Yes, sir. Any county-owned recreational facility. Fairgrounds, yeah.
So, I think your task is to have the conversation with the Sheriff's Office, to have some letter of support or something from the Sheriff's Office, so that he'd be willing to try to enforce it, right? And that'd be it, okay?
But we appreciate what you do and what you stand for. It means a lot. A lot of people hear you when you don't think they're listening.
Yes, sir.
So keep on speaking.
And that's right. And one of the things I will say, it's one thing when it comes from a bunch of adults doing it. It makes a lot of difference when it's coming from you guys. So I appreciate what you guys do at your level to be able to do this. And so, so keep sticking, keep pushing forward. You're doing a great job, so keep pushing forward with it. But I would encourage you to continue to have the conversation with the Sheriff's Office about the enforcement side, so he can make that commitment before we move forward.
Thank you.
I think you can take that jar and make a good point. Jar, I mean, that's.
I hope it's, I hope it's sealed, for sure. Thank you. Sure, Zach?
Can I add a few more things?
Absolutely.
When we went and cleaned up the park, we had a bunch of SWAT members come out. We went around the park with trash bags in hand, and we made a game out of it. This type of involvement is necessary, and we do need a lot of people to help make this work. With, my thing is, we can't tell people what to do in their own home, but we can stop it from happening in public places like the parks, where children are bound to be roaming around, you know? Social cognitive theory, you learn from the things you see and from the things you hear, monkey see, monkey do. We are all aware of the very negative health benefits that smoking and secondhand smoking can cause. So, when kids are playing around at the parks, they are bound to see people smoking. They're going to pick it up. They're going to think it's, oh, it's okay to do. And we definitely don't want that. We're going to have a lot more people in the ER, so we don't want that. But with this ordinance, we could definitely try and stop most of these things from happening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is Juvenile Justice Circuit Court Advisory Board nominations. Ms. Sarah?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we received some information from Ms. Sandy Brandon, who's the chief probation officer in our district. It's been a little bit, and since, since the Juvenile Justice Circuit Advisory Board has been in effect, they do meet quarterly in Gainesville. And Ms. Brandon did provide a cover letter there that's attached to the form. I don't believe that there's a set meeting scheduled just yet, but I do know that the meetings are quarterly. So what they're looking for is a member of this board to join this Circuit Advisory Board, and so that they can reestablish that and get those meetings back on, on the calendar again. So, I said, I hope you guys, if you have any questions, I'll try to work my way through it. But again, there is some information from Ms. Brandon there. I'm just looking to see if there's any interest from you all to possibly have a nominee to serve in this capacity for them.
I think that a date of the meetings would help a lot.
Yes, sir. And I don't think they've set that just yet, until they get the membership.
Commissioner could really help.
Yes, sir.
Because there are certain dates I can't do it, and there are certain dates that the other commissioners can't do it.
Yes, sir.
So it'd be hard for me to nominate somebody, or encourage someone, and they don't even know when the meetings are going to be.
Yes, sir.
Do they have a?
Just that they're quarterly. Like, I think they're still trying to reestablish everything on, on that. Yes, sir.
I don't think we have a problem with someone sitting on the, it's just a problem of the timeline.
Okay.
So if we can get some type of timeline, maybe at the next board meeting, we can see if we can work it in our schedule.
Yes, sir, certainly. I can see we can get some.
Is that good? Or are they in a hurry?
I didn't get that it was urgent, no, sir. But I think certainly, maybe they've had some more members appointed. They might have a, a schedule in mind by this time. So I can reach out to Sandy and ask her, or at least if they know an idea of when those meetings might be.
First, second, third, or whatever. I mean, we just don't know right now.
Yes, sir, certainly. Certainly, we can find out some more information and bring it back if that is helpful.
Is that okay with the board?
Do you need a motion to table this, or?
I think we, she can just take, we don't have to table this, do we? Rich? Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is Sixth Amendment to the Inducement Development Agreement. Mr. Derrick?
Good evening.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners? Thank you for the opportunity to provide a quick update. Since this project started back in 2020, and then when it received approval in 2023, there's been a significant amount of work done by all associated parties. Millions of dollars have already been spent to bring this project to fruition. But there are a few things still remaining. They're underway, they're in process, and expected to be finalized in the coming weeks. These are related to finalizing of approvals that will wrap up their financing package, so that construction can get started. So civil engineers are currently working to obtain standard site permits through the county and St. John's Water Management District. A few months back, there was a, a conversation with the Community Development Department, Building Inspector, and Fire Inspector, that on the permitting process for the company. And everyone agreed that it would probably be best if they contracted with a private plan reviewer that will review and certify all of their plans before they're submitted to the county. So that has happened. They've contracted with that plan reviewer. Structural drawings for the initial phases of, of the project have been submitted to this plan reviewer, and his review is currently underway. Expect to have those plans finalized, approved, and stamped in the coming weeks. And the company is, and working with its construction partners to finalize project insurance and risk management. risk management structure, including course of construction insurance, performance bonds, and letters of credit. These items are standard for most construction projects, but are more complex due to the range of partners involved in this one. So, in closing, I'll just say that this is a significant and highly complex project, different than most I've ever seen. The $750 million of investment in the facilities, which by the way, is the largest construction of this type of facility in the world. There's never been one that's this big, and it's going to be right here in Baker County. And while it's taken longer than anyone ever expected it would, we're in the final stages. We're very close, and the few remaining items that we've discussed are all in process and will be finalized over the coming weeks. So, we respectfully ask that you approve the Sixth Amendment to extend the closing date on the property to May 31st.
Questions, comments from the board?
Ms. Sarah, if I may?
Yes.
I've continued to remain in touch with the guys as they're trying to move this forward. While there's been a lot of activity going along with it, there has been some frustration with it. They keep hitting little challenges that you have to work around, you've got to figure out how to solve them. They continue to do that. They are continuing to move forward. Of course, they're continuing to spend a lot of money to move forward. So, this idea that, is this just, they're not doing it to bail out at some point. It is a project that's moving forward, they're working on it, they're actively working on it, they're asking for a little bit more time. I've expressed my concerns with them right up front, it's time to resolve it. And they assure me they are doing everything they can to try to move it forward. They did not want to have to come back again for this, but in fairness to them, they are working through something that hasn't been done before, and they're trying to figure out how to do it. So, I'm going to support moving forward with it, and I'm glad to put the motion on the floor to approve the Sixth Amendment to the Inducement Agreement and Development Agreement.
Motion seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Same.
Thank you, Darrow. Thanks for the update. Okay, moving to our next item on the agenda, which is opinion business report. Ms. Sarah?
Yes, sir, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. You guys will have to forgive me, I'll try to speak up, but just coming off the tail end of a little cold. Starting at the top, the COA bus wash, we obviously have gotten our CO on that. DOT did come out last week and do their inspection on the property as well. We are working through the water issues still on the property. Thanks to Commissioner Mobley, we've made some progress on that. We did have a company come out and do the inspection on the backflow preventer. There is some work that needs to be done, and so we authorized the approval of about $1,900 was their proposal, excuse me, to do those repairs that were needed on that backflow preventer.
Is that going to resolve the problem?
We're not...
Is that going to resolve the problem?
We're not sure.
Million-dollar question. They're, the backflow right now currently is rusted up pretty good, so they took it apart just to investigate. Investigated, the flanges are pretty rusted, the wheels that prevent the backflow and the pressure. It needs to be fixed. If that, is that the issue? I think there's a valve, there has to be a valve somewhere that could possibly be closed off halfway. But this right here is definitely going to help give a little bit more pressure to it. But right now, we're currently looking for a set of ass builds on what was put in the ground back in, I think, 2013?
Yes, sir.
If I'm correct. So, that's where it stands right now. Dolphin backflow will be out hopefully in the next week or so to perform the repairs to the backflow. They came out and did an investigation, basically, to see what was wrong and found that, but beyond that, I think we're still going to have a valve or something that's probably going to happen. I've been working with the city. The city of McLinnie and Terry Starland's been a great help, trying to locate it in their catheters.
One thing to add to, Mr. Chairman, on the transportation center side, we did have part of that system camera scoped to see if there was some kind of issue with that. And in addition, we think that, you know, the backflow preventer and the water issue may be causing all of it, but just to be sure, we went ahead and are working on some other things simultaneously. So, we did have someone come out and look at that for us with their camera system, and we did discover that the plumbing on those bathrooms in the existing transportation building was a little odd, to say the least, and that does use low-flow toilets. And so, in the event that that might be part of the problem, we are installing new toilets there that have more water flow to help potentially push that, that's, it's kind of sitting in the pipes once it's leaving the building. And so, the hope is, is that the more water that those toilets are flushing out at one time, might be able to resolve that as well. So, not only are we working on the back, but we are looking at other areas as well that there may be some other issues. It may not be just the backflow, we're concerned that we might have a couple of things that are just conveniently happening at the same time. So, we're working a couple of angles on that, and we'll continue to monitor that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on down into St. Mary's Cove Boat Ramp, Mr. Clint with North Florida Professional Services is working diligently on our Phase Two for us, so hopefully we'll have some information that, just to remind you all, that was the design and permitting of a restroom and lighting facility at the complex, so it would not have any negative effect on us talking about moving the boat ramp. You know, with the FEMA discussions that we've had, this would go along with any potential improvements there. So, that one's continuing to move through the process.
Ms. Sarah, if you don't mind, let's make sure that we have a clear understanding of potential relocation boat ramp.
Yes, sir.
And where these are located, so that they work together, and one's not away from the others.
Conveniently, the person that's writing the scope for that project is also Mr. Clint that's working on that boat ramp for us, so he will be very well aware of all the plans and the changes to it. Yes, sir.
Make sure he has a conversation with himself, then.
Yes, sir. Clint, have a conversation with yourself, right? Yes, sir. We did discuss that, we talked about it, about the location and things like that, so yes, we will make sure that's taken care of. Moving on down into Shoals Park, we did extend our contract with our second camp post tonight. Those two that are onsite have been doing pretty well for us. Like I said, they've just both recently completed their six months with us at the property, and we've done extensions on them both now, so they will be onsite for another six months unless something changes. Let's see, moving on down, COA Senior Life Enrichment Center, again, the CO has been received on this one. We are working with the contractor on a few punch list items to get that taken care of. We did receive a second quote that was much better for landscaping. Unfortunately, it does still require a third, an additional quote for, to meet our purchasing guidelines. So, I sent that information to, we actually just received it on Monday, the second quote for that, so it looked much better than the first numbers, though. So, I shared that with Mr. Phil Roden and Ms. Barbara Yarborough, and asked them if they had any other suggestions for landscapers that they'd like me to reach out to to get that third quote, so we can hopefully get that wrapped up in that building finalized and a grand opening taken care of. So, again, like I said, we've got a lot of things happening on that property, but we're working on them.
What we don't want to do is have a third quote hold up the progress of an opening.
Yes, sir.
So, if it comes to a point where the third request is not...
By the next meeting.
By the next meeting of the night, those two quotes should be brought before the board, so we can make a decision to move forward on that.
Certainly.
Because we don't want that holding progress.
Hold up progress. Yes, sir, we can certainly do that. Let's see, moving on down, we'll get an update, maybe some pictures from the Kyler Fire Station for you all from Chief Blanton at the next commission meeting, but he is not with us tonight. But the NAB Sports Complex, again, that project is still full steam ahead. We've got quite a few Little League teams that are out there practicing on some of those spaces as well, and while we're working on those finishing touches on that complex, again, there will be part of this construction that will, it will pause through the Little League season, and we will begin some additional construction once that's over. We've still got some bathroom complexes and concession stands and things like that that we have to address, but our main focus before this season was on the fields themselves. And so, we're going to try, like I said, to get those done once the, not try, we will get those done once the Little League season is complete again this year. Just make sure it's on your calendars. I know we talked about this two weeks ago, but opening day has been scheduled for March 29th.
Will the dugout roofs be done by then?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
Yeah, it looks like they're pretty good. They're there today.
Yes, sir.
I think it'll be by Saturday. Yeah.
The question I have out there is, we need some type of a board somewhere on the facility stating future progress, future projects.
Yes, sir.
That will be under construction, just for communication to share with the people who's using the facility, the mom and the pops and the grandparents, to see where we're at now and where we're going.
Especially on that, by opening day.
Yes, we have those, we actually had them last year as well. I think they've all gotten taken down because of the construction, but yes, sir, we'll make sure all that's back up in place.
I just want to make sure those are backups, so people can walk by and see, you know, this is where, the stage we're at now, we're not finished.
Yes, sir.
But this is where we want to go.
Yes, sir, certainly, we'll make sure all this is back up.
Very good for the people there.